So, you see that email from Diane Box? At the door.
The aspect of remote was an option for that. I mean, I think I'm older than.
All right, it's eight thirty, eighteen thirty, six thirty. And it likes to call this meeting to work. See approval of agenda, and you see he's got dishes there placing table. Motion to second approve the agenda, any comments or? Observations, here none, one favorite. Post, public comment, Brian, if anybody wants to. Okay, here none, let's move into our information portion of our meeting, four point one, welcome back, Mr. Cooper and your team.
Thanks for allowing us on your busy attendance tonight. We live here now, through this mic, okay? We've got several groups here to present. First of all, we've got our national convention group, so we'll let the students introduce themselves, talk about national F A convention.
I'm Ken Sponseler. I'm Ken Sponseler, I went to the National F A Convention, I mean, it was, it was a great experience, if I'm being honest, Cooper really had talked me into it, but at the end, it was really worth it, we went out, first thing we did after the warm bus ride, was we stayed out there and we got to talk to a presenter who talked about her life and like all about being yourself, which was really great, because it gives you a little insight, not changing personality for other people, and I mean, this figure really, she talked about how she wanted to be on the news, but she couldn't because she was talked about as like a fancy cowgirl, where she wore like cowgirl boots on the internet and on the news, and she didn't want to change for a news company, so she ended up going to her own, and then expanding up to that, she became very successful, so. I mean, there's just a lot of great lessons out of that national convention, and even seeing like all the fifty different states with blue jackets from everywhere was like, it's crazy stuff.
Hi, guys, thank you, and I also have a question. But in the middle of the night, and we have a day long, that's right, I'm right there, and we got there, we attended the video opening session, and then next thing we went on to, um, to, I'm sorry, fisheries, and we heard about different, like they are both fish, fishery, so there were a lot of different types of fish that they grow and it would affect, so they become southern, and so, so it's like, and so, and so we also went along, reading up the fish and looking at them after a great study, and they're ready to distribute to different regions. First thing you actually went to. Uh, this is, I don't know, this is Samantha Black in Team Research, American F A, at the National Convention on Saturday. It is the highest degree.
Were you ever have anybody do that before?
Of course, we did this. And Keith there. So, I'm only understanding, three months ago, we managed to, or not three months ago, but two weeks ago, to a full conference called Amplify and Make Change One, and we learned all about everything from careers in agriculture that they offered communities, to the first game similarity among members of that good thing, and it was a fun experience, and it was a really good time. I'm in the family kitchen, and I also attended the Ignite Conference, and I think one of my favorite things I remember about there was the opportunities in the field that just outside of like farming, and we learned about working at fisheries and working like cattle showing, cattle showing, and I think it was a really good opportunity for freshmen and undergraduates to go and learn about how F A works and why it is a good opportunity to join.
I'm Alexis Hushit, I also attend the Ignite Conference, my favorite session was on career opportunities, and it was basically on future job opportunities for people in F A and like the different jobs to go into, I also enjoy meeting the students from other schools.
Hi, I'm Allison Green with World of Careers, and we're part of the M S A Discovery Act, and we're going to show you a little bit about that. So, first of all, we've had about nine meetings on seven hours from eight to ten a.m., we've also met twice during the seminar, that's what we had twenty hours total. Next month, Saturday, we do lots of things, so far we've done welding, plasma torch cutting, stick welding, soil testing, paddle management, field terrace studies, and water testing. Um, all students have a supervised experience background, they've come to the core activities on outside double classroom. We also talk about corn and bee products and sales, as well as any catching up on our S A journals. Um, we're looking towards our discovery period, which is what our twenty hours comes for, and then go over how they're not.
That discovery, that's just the last, I have something, and I work hard to do, that prepares, helps break up my physical parts, fit and everybody, and help make own. This last Saturday, we went out to say that it has the water, like on terrace, the tile. I'll take that part, so.
Hard group, I have a little hard group, that's probably the chairperson of the day. And this year, we harvested three thousand nineteen bush tops, armor felt, fifteen acres, and harvested a thousand nineteen, maybe, off the soy, uh, fifteen hundred, nineteen by five acres, three hundred bushes, four, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty cents, which you have, one thousand four hundred and seventy nine dollars. We just sold three hundred and thirteen bushes in the summer second, at five dollars and sixty seven cents a bush. One thousand eight hundred and four dollars, and seven seconds, we also sold, so, and eleven dollars, ninety five cents, two thousand six hundred and three hundred. We still have two thousand four hundred and fifty, and eight hundred bushes, so.
Our fruit sales, fruit we cut this Wednesday, for the total sale of twenty eight thousand nine hundred, pretty good sale, six hundred and ninety four of that bean online. Okay, Josie. Price Scholar.
Hello, my name is Josie Kelly, and this October, I participated in Global Youth Institute, which is a, it was virtual this year, but it's a conference where about two hundred students from around the country get together and talk about problems in developing countries, and may come up with, let me just, solutions about how we can solve those problems, along with that, we have to come up with a solution to pay for all these solutions that we came up with to solve these problems, and it's one of the most, I think, experiences I've ever been to, I got to meet people from all over the world, for example, one of them, she was the largest Canadian fishery female owner, it was really cool, we had about a three hour discussion, and for the whole week I was there, I just got to touch so many amazing people, and really opened my eyes to what the world is like outside of the United States. Before I participated in Global Youth Institute, I had to attend Iowa Youth Institute, and from there, a handful of students get picked to attend G Y I, my paper was about water insecurities in Ethiopia, and that whole paper took me about twenty six hours start to finish, and that's not including my presentation and my discussions I had with students tomorrow, but it's a great experience, and I really hope I can do the same. Uh, yeah, so I also went to Amplify, which we had some freshmen talk about, and I, Amplify, we talked about our purpose of life and how we can take that purpose and kind of put it into what we want to do with our futures, and it was a really great experience, we got to talk to people from all over the state of Iowa, and we got to interact with all the state officers, it was pretty great.
Yeah, I could have probably added a lot more slides, it's just been a really good fall so far, coming off a good summer at State Fair, and a lot of other things that are good, we're selling equipment weekly right now, tractor projects, and of course, working on those tractors, because there's always little glitches maybe before we get to the customer with those electrical and so forth, but good sales, and grants, memorial money, funds, just incredible, you know, Sally Jensen, they were in this last fall with her memorial funds, we got items just a few years ago, and then the Witherspoon Foundation Grant, and then Iowa Select Farms Grant this past week, that is for two hundred and fifty dollars, two K support coins, so a tremendous amount of resources that keep coming into program and F A organization. Let's see, what else? Working on C T E's programs, approval, self-assessment, that's taken a tremendous amount of time this last month or so, so we're busy. The D O T though, and they're gonna start working on the front edge road and so forth, so that lease, they canceled on us, but then Steve Owens, he stopped in this afternoon, and he said that maybe he would get that forty acres on the north side of Iowa, so I don't know if they would come back to us or not, I don't, with a lease on our tractor, right? And then Flummer Fell, he may expand his trailer court this next year, so we might be out of Flummer Fell area, so, might have to look for some more ground, but otherwise, things are good, and on the World Food Prize, I'm really impressed, we have several students working on the research papers for the two thousand twenty-two World Food Prize State Institute, so keep coaching a group of those students to write up research papers, that's a great experience, Ellie Nana's applying for summer internship, we're logging internship, yeah, so, a lot of good things going on, a lot of fun, good students, good school, good community. Thanks, any questions?
It's getting cold, what are you guys gonna do now? You guys, okay, you had a good summer, you had a good fall.
Well, spring plant orders, the spring crop for the greenhouse, those, the order for those cuttings are already in, so we kind of worked from last spring, what we needed to increase as far as plant products, like tri-color, it just sold out immediately, where we quadrupled the cutting order on that tri-color, and then we're gonna stay with the sun patients, the hanging baskets, I'm gonna stay away from miracles, it seemed like they track frizz, you know, the bananas are fun, yeah, we got a ton of bananas, and we had white pineapple, we harvested that about three weeks ago, Lily, you guys got?
You guys, they've got the sample of white pineapple, part of the way has white pineapple, it's really good, a lot of them, most of their way has yellow pineapple, that's white pineapple, that was quite a thing, so, yeah. Oh, we're starting to get ready for leadership contests, February, there you go, part of a receiver team, the sophomores are just killing, I mean, these guys are amazing, they're in this morning again, nine o'clock, and there you are, machine, so hopefully they'll go to state, you know, so this, state competitive contact means freshman, check the program for activities, they're working, so yeah, we'll, I would agree also, yeah, it's busy. Better dinner coming up, in here, January twenty-third.
So if someone would buy some food or nuts, how are they gonna fill that up in the mouth?
We're still moving product, you know, main orders coming in Wednesday, we got, we got packed, it's out there yet, yeah.
Thank you guys, appreciate it, look forward to it every time you guys come. Moving on. Maybe four point two, little school renovation update. Get to the end.
Yes, we are definitely busy, since we met last time, we have a mission capital in administration offices at Middle School, and that let us move every, all the stuff in the store to the rest of it, with that one, that out, so we sealed the floor in there, got that just fully cleaned up thoroughly, and painters prepped, and it's gonna start this afternoon, it's probably gonna start in the morning, we'll be spraying the walls and ceiling, we'll expect that painting to finish up here, go closer to the end of this week, so then the district can put the wall mat talk and start using that just space. We are also working to finish up the kitchen, all that work I've been talking about, upgrading the walls, gonna change order, cut, upgrade the walls, old dish room, that's been completed, start painting, finish this kitchen out, so that kitchen turned back. Uh, we do have a lot of work, we're gonna do, the meat between Christmas and New Year's, just because that's the time we get in school, things are painting, so people, the ads, we're gonna do a lot of work, corridors, we're gonna repaint, so the walls are now all currently white, we're gonna go to gray, give it a little bit less of an institutional feel, those corridors, we're gonna do a lot of touch-up painting, the corridors that we need to do, a lot of work is going on, a lot of punch those stuff we want to do. So. That's where we're, that's where we're heading here, really, for people to go, to see this thing out without being here Christmas.
Where we at?
The storefronts, supposed to start last week, it's like it's been some. Yes, one, he had material issues. Let me rephrase that. He had material, just not all. So he's looking at, he's got enough now to put together a number of those doors, and I could start with near thirty down those. There was a lot, some of those though will be finished up at Christmas, like main entrance, again, one of those, and we don't want to try to tackle, because it's gonna take a little bit of time to do that main entrance, tackle it over Christmas break, or I have a whole week to do it. And we'll have to change orders on the agenda for tonight, but there will be some coming for next week, so.
Anybody have any questions? Here none, appreciate it.
Thank you folks, we'll see you with two.
Stay in tune.
Well, Dr. Gray, I think you got four point three, as you were part of the process.
Yeah, so I just included the vision twenty forty process, so you could just get an idea of kind of the steps that we've gone through, this actually went back, I would say really the true start was probably two thousand fifteen, when we revisited, created vision twenty twenty that was done in the nineties, and then through that process, came up with the capstone, which was of course addressing the L S F B L issue, Gates Hall acquisition, and a rec center. So, with that nearly complete, last year, we started this process, or vision twenty forty, and got a pretty good response on our community survey and things of that nature, and then this group has pulled together to go through a more systemic process to arrive with a draft plan, so you can kind of see some of the groups that have been involved with that process, the city, the school, N E D C, Main Street, Hospital, as well as some other community members. For example, Lori Henry was brought in the process, she was part of the vision twenty twenty process back in the nineties, and some others, so it's been a good process, been some good brainstorming, some of it is new, a lot of it's not really earth-shattering or new, there are things that we've been talking about for a long time, of course, housing's been, forever, and continues to be, so you see a lot of those common themes, and even within our portion of that plan, quite a bit of that's not new, kind of jumping into five point one here a little bit, but those, those points in the district portion, many or most of them are things that we've started working on, and we've been told in the social, emotional learning stuff, or at Central, this is year three, year four, and we're a couple of years behind that of middle school and high school, but there are a number of items in there, such as that, for example, that really aren't, really aren't new to us. Work-based learning, of course, we've been working on that for quite some time, and you'll be getting an update from me later this week, we've been invited to present at N E D C board meeting in January, just in regards to workforce and what we're doing as a district for work-based learning, and our playbook's pretty comprehensive, so we'll be presenting that, as well as the I J A C program, it's finally ready to go live in January, we'll be presenting that as well, I'll have both of those in the quarter update this week for you. The elementary playground is something that Krista and I, that we're working on, along with P T A, this is some of their fundraising, their desire there is really, not only is some of the equipment need to be replaced in the condition, but their desire is to make it all A D A accessible as well, so that's something that they've been working on. What's the timeline, two thousand twenty-three? That's, I think it's, yeah, within the next couple of years, they've started that process to just acquire the funding, and they've been doing some research on that, and just kind of spitballing twenty twenty-three, they may get it done before then.
I'm just, when you started getting into the next portion, then you're starting putting markers down, our tapes, yeah, I was just looking at that, whatever it looks, our portion of it, and yet, two thousand twenty-three, that is pretty impressive.
Yeah, it is, but I know that they've been really working at it, that, you know, Mr. Cooper mentioned the Witherspoon Foundation Grant, they earmarked that with ten thousand this year towards the elementary project too, so along with P T A, their fundraising, they'll get there, it just, it could be next year, it could be the following. So again, most of those things, we expanded mental health partnerships, we started, we've already made one expansion with the Central Iowa Psychology partnership this fall, which that's been, had a benefit. Probably the big item that we're just throwing a dart out there is probably the eight point one, if indeed, if and when, you know, housing becomes solvable, if, in the future, and this is throwing a dart out that far, we'd like, we'd love different people that are sitting here tonight, but I think it just needs to be on the radar, that our enrollment would take an uptick, that at some point in the future, the leadership of the district is gonna need to think about facilitating, probably land acquisition facility, and that's just one idea, obviously, the district will make a decision as to what the best route would be to go on that, but solving the N C R C facility, it's been a good facility for us, but again, as we get another fifteen or twenty years out, that, that could be something that needs to be addressed, so that's kind of where that idea came from, and at least to get that in a living document, so that it's, it's on the radar at some point.
Well, eight, there you go, you, community leadership development program, and enter, which we can see here's students, what did that sound like?
Yeah, so that one actually wasn't from our team, that was from the group, and that really stemmed from really the group being very complimentary as to the leadership opportunities that the district offers to students, I think we saw a prime example, I think, right in front of us tonight, and just an expansion of that, I wanted to get that on the radar, that there may be opportunities in our community to partner local businesses, city, county, and give the right students additional leadership opportunities, so.
Are they targeting high school age students, or is that more broad?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's broader than that, but, but I think you're right, I think that's typically where our minds go, right? That's, those are typically the students that we see with those types of opportunities. But I think that discussion was just, maybe it could be even broader and bigger. The same with the civic engagement, you know, in terms of city and county government, certainly we bring those leaders into our building at different times for different classes, it just depends on the standards, the Iowa board standards that they're working on, but I know Mayor Barker was in the middle school classroom a week or so ago, two weeks ago, those kinds of things haven't been uncommon, but our discussion in the planning group was, there may be opportunities to make that more more deliberate, more in-depth, and maybe it's not just your high school government class, but there may be opportunities that are others too. And then our, we were also listed as a participant on one of the other goals, in terms of the community-wide base letter, which that is happening. The first edition of that will be coming soon.
So that be a paper mailer, or just electronic?
That one is going to be a paper mailer, we're going to take on that responsibility, and the other organizations involved, the city, the county, the hospital, will be reimbursing, so I think I put that in the board update a while back, that we were doing our own mailing, and then as our content shrunk because of our online presence, it was hard to justify the cost, we weren't putting out a lot of content, so. So our cost that we were incurring for our newsletter is not going to go up. So it'll be the same cost for us, but it'll be a good product. And I think a lot of people like getting that hard copy.
Jerry, that's going to be quarterly?
It, I, yeah, it's, it's going to be monthly, actually. Yeah, I think at the beginning, that discussion was quarterly. And then it felt like monthly. Particularly, there's, there's, there's still a portion of our population that I think was with the Nevada Journal changing, shrinking. I think there, I think there are people who value this kind of thing every month. A lot of people that maybe don't have the overwhelming presence. So.
So is this a beta-centric?
Uh, yeah, for the most part, maybe land, maybe, you know, lands that are part of it too, as far as the county part of it.
And the play going to be called Joe, in the title, keep our Nevada. It'll go out to all the households, the school district, the outside. Um, the partners that Dr. Gray mentioned, on a monthly basis, each with about one, one or two pages. It's two pages. It's a twelve, twelve-page newsletter, maybe sixteen pages, certain months. But generally, I'd already a twelve-page newsletter. And it is, I don't want to say it's a beta-centric, but it will be a lot of information. It's from the data or sorry, how many pages I got up. I, I presented it to the board supervisors last week or so. I'm really excited about that. I think, and we're going to use a pilot program to see how we can replicate it.
Do you have the chance for Nevada students to be involved, to come together as far as organization or layout or anything like that?
Thanks, the hospital. Layout's pretty well, our template's pretty good. Our, the city will be doing a, they'll be on the page to Joe, but I mentioned to Joe getting last week, the simple stapling or label would be good for someone for dollars too.
I don't think publication is kind of a dying art now, but just process of the community. From the, the presence also of this.
I think we intend to.
I, I assume so, but I guess I have.
I'm just, I'm kind of, I mean, like you say, or you gravitate it towards the online. Yeah, the thing is people do, you want to give them the opportunity to find it for me. Yep.
I think that's a city's interest.
Well, I can just say where the collaboration in itself, because there's things that happen there substantial science projects coming on that people are surprised to hear about. In fact, conversations are quite like they had for months, if not years. And they affect them. And this is kind of a venue that has to get out there.
Yeah, so those are the, those are the areas or goals that we're involved in. And the Institute for Decision Making, if you and I that's leading this process is asking that, that every organization's listed in the plan kind of give it their endorsement. So that's why it's an action item five point one.
Like I see shovel ready is coming back into both. It will.
We've got some page thirty-four. It kind of speaks to where our contribution to this document is at.
Yeah, I first saw item eight point one and saw the timeline, the timeframe of two thousand thirty to two thousand forty. It struck me to be way out, but it's not.
Yeah, well, and truthfully, if we were experiencing that right now, which we're not, obviously, we would be five years away from being able to act on it, you know? Just because our revenue streams are tied up in the projects that we've been doing. So we'd be a good five years out. And then all of a sudden, you go five years out. You know, we're talking twenty twenty-seven. We're, we're not that far away from that twenty thirty to twenty forty, right? So.
Right, the school team that's involved in these off-american, they are meeting together.
So because most of those goals are things that we are actively doing, our leadership teams engaged in those conversations. We spent a good deal of time late spring and into the fall. For example, in regards to mental health resources, those types of things. So there are things that we're engaged in, things that are engaged in. The buildings, the building goals, the social emotional learning stuff is embedded in the goals. So thank you for revisiting the point.
So when you said there were pedestrian safety programs, I believe it was two years, that city had to yield this additional stop signs around the elementary. Is there any proposals out there in regards to?
Yes. So we met a couple of times this fall. Couple of years ago, when that came up, we asked for some stop signs around Central, which happened, those were turned into four ways. There are two intersections, the stop signs were added to. The yield signs, the city was doing a study. And then COVID kind of shut that off there. So we did ask them to revisit that, brought their attention maybe last spring. We met again this fall. One of the things that they're hoping to do are get the safe routes for bicycles. They're planning to add a bike lane elementary over here on H for sure. And then they're talking about some other areas throughout town where that can happen. The, the one, the bike lane for H would have, would have happened already, but you can't get the paint. Yeah, same issue we ran into with our curves this summer. We usually refresh our curves when they're all. But it's, so.
So this is already been really talked about to a good degree and it's just.
Yeah, I think, I think, for example, the, the same pathways. They wanted to get some this, the discussion centered upon the elementary campus, the secondary campus. But the city in the future wants to continue to look, you know, out of town, looking south, out of town.
Have you been in a talk in, in that regard, upgrading the signage from just plain old street signs? We've got flash and sound all over town. I've got, you know, I've been driving that, I've been driving this way for forty years. Everyone wants to know, oh, let, oh, Florida, because it seems to be, and maybe my memory is off, it probably is. But it seems to be what used to be. Stop signs used to be on board and south, it's something that's actually changed at some point. It's just. I just think it needs to be a little more.
Yeah. They, they just talked about, they did talk a lot about signage. They're also planning to do different colored street signs that kind of indicate neighborhoods or districts. Then they also talked about kind of your point, Joe, some type of, there's some type of marking actually on the concrete of the road that kind of indicates, like, you all are slowing down kind of thing. So those are some of the discussions that they brought to the table that I think they're planning to do. Anybody else got any questions? Because we're ready to turn around and seamlessly transition this into an action item. Talk about it now, talk about it in the moment.
Go back to eight, eight point one, the, the new building that we really start to think about it, that whoever runs for school board and is successful in running and getting elected in two years is going to be involved in, you know, starting to plan this. So it, it is really on the doorstep.
Yeah, I think it'll be enrollment driven.
Right.
But yeah, that would be the furthest, I think, than any discussion, given that we'd be at least five years off before we have potentially a defense speak or something like that. And maybe not full capacity. Except just talking about the safe funds and depending on that to really guide it to geo-capacity based on the elementary, high school projects, but especially with that.
Hey, where do you truly, where do you go? Because at some point, it's likely for hope that you start to see as you're watching, you know, it's out there. The, like the, the city, they need, they'll make some agro around it to save family housing. After the startup, and you already seen a lot of, you know, periphery, rule of data, which I see that you do. Yeah, at some point, you know, it will turn into a spring up and then, you know. And this is tonight, Joe alluded, I think that we for not too distant future, it's going to be acquisitions of properties, hold up.
Good problem to have.
I have a question about eight point five. A little bit more about what has been implemented, what's the discussions.
Eight point five?
Yes.
Social emotional learning, you know, that's become really a state-driven initiative. Our elementary was a little ahead of that. Emily Koozie been a leader in that area at faculty state, set up their initial task force, they contacted us to ask that Emily be a part of that. So one thing that I can do is, I think that probably be a good, a good work ethic for you. I'll have them come talk. Because as I said, we're a year four of the elementary now. Or a year two of the high school, middle school. Yeah, so I will, I will put that down. In fact, I'm trying to Dr. Asmus, I just talked about that. I will schedule that for a presentation before we, if I can, if I can do that. Because it's, it's part of their building goals, they're giving places, so.
Anything else?
I do, eight point six, again, that's a, that would say possible. That's just outside of scope of the strategic plans. Have you seen any information? I know the safe process for, it's out, it's been structured. And who would it, if there were additional grants, more grants, would that be a joint application for the city to?
I will think it would be a city, but I, I, I don't think so that. Would maybe have a role in that.
I, I just see if, if this has been approved by the board, school board, in part. This would be a support, right?
Yeah, it's actually. I would guess that it would be a city grant, but I would think the part of support and endorsement of that would have a book process.
With the same content into our action agenda, five point one. Now we've had a chance to talk about it, probably continue that discussion, if we also got anything else that they see. Yes, I was pleased to see it was kind of broke out here on timelines, who was participating would be responsive to seeing these things come to pass. It looks like a pretty well thought out document. I've got to say that, you know, the success that we've seen on the twenty twenty. I hope that we are as equally, people will look back and say that wise people sat down twenty years before and fixed the worthy goals.
Same discussion, we see, we're talking about the same content. We had just kind of, kind of digesting it verbally. And now to move it into something that we adopt as a district, that becomes our first action agenda. I haven't seen anything else there that you would like to ask a question about this. You got some real traction here on eight points. Five, getting it on one more meeting agenda. So do another swing at it?
I guess more so from a community perspective. Are there land, like updates to the community on these goals? Or more so in terms of like accountability, if goals need to change or are steps.
I think we'll have to look at the information that's assisting with this. They do have some timelines. But if that is in their document, I will write it to you accordingly. They, they do, they do, they did have something that I can't speak in specifics, right?
So as we likely move to adopt this, this is going to be something we're going to place on our website for people to see.
I would think that each organization would definitely be doing that, yes.
I got to ask, what's a splash mark? Anybody?
Like a little tiny fountain for the little kids to jump around and walk through the water.
Bubbles about the ground, washings about the ground.
Kind of have something like that. I guess maybe that's, I think, I think it is, I think there, the idea is that we want somewhere, somewhere that can carry it out.
Usually they're looking for marks.
See them, yeah, marks or some cities have them.
Dog mark. Oh, with the dog mark.
That was a very, actually a very popular topic.
Possible, right? Is it possible to add, review this on a ongoing basis to our retreat?
Yeah. Because you're going to be able to say some of these, you know, as you see the word bowls fall, some things for us to take down.
Going back to, going back to some of the mentoring, was that focusing in readiness mentoring or just traditional mentoring, social emotional services?
I think, again, that one was some of the other group, we we have mentoring programs in our, in our schools right now. But would there be opportunities in the future to expand those?
Are mentoring programs, if you have enough adults, if we need to stand up to them?
I think we do currently, but we, that's kind of edged and flowed over the years, you know, we had times where adding up volunteers and we've had times where volunteers others do, so. City actually reached out to me today. They're searching, they, it must be something where they encourage their employees to do 30 hours here, something of that nature. So they were looking for a more comprehensive list of opportunities to volunteer in schools. Most typically come from the building level or classroom level, they need volunteers for specific things. So when the city was seeking, or Maros was asking me today was, do we have kind of a central location where on our website where we have all our volunteer needs and we don't because we have a building, class, but I think that's where that was really coming from, with their expanded opportunities for mentoring, volunteering, further collaboration, around getting the area, business, city, interactive.
Have a population of adults who are volunteers into the schools, what's that process like for them? Have to do a background check or apply?
Yeah, I think it depends on what you're volunteering for. The the mentoring process through YSS, I do think there, there's a background, checks. If you're coming into our building, say to read to elementary, it'd be like any other adult entering our building. You do scan through your, our raptor process, which gives a background against the sex offender registry, but if it doesn't do background, it's the criminal. My last question, that's what, I see it's, you know, as equally as, uh, long range and optimistic when they sit there and talk about the conversion of the hospitals on our campus. And we talked about property acquisition or future build outs, what was the discussion behind that? You know, what was the thought, what were you going to, what did you do? I think, I, I don't know the answer to that, but it's it's on their radar. Something, it's something that they know the hospital board is going to need to address and that they know that the hospital board and the city have got to re-visit that at some point in the future, how, what that's going to be or how it's going to happen. How that's going to be funded, I think they're throwing that dart out there as this is something that we need to start thinking about. It's one of the last three phases, so it does move to non-tertiary displacement, that will be a naked facility. Anybody else got any questions? More reaching, there's a lot of material there that I see that you guys finally brought that to light because it's been a while in the making, so. We're hearing no questions, it is an action item, so I would entertain a motion in a second for the Beta Vision 2040 Plan.
I'll make a motion that, that this board endorses the the Beta Vision 2040 Plan as it's been presented to us tonight.
We have a motion in a second that Beta School Board would like to adopt the Beta Vision 2040 Plan. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Five point two, substitute teacher compensation, Dr. Gray.
So I've provided you some update. This is a problem everywhere, there are a lot of substitutes. And last week Ames raised, there's, there's some rate directed by that, our administrative team asked me to bring a recommendation to the board that we also increase our daily rate. Whether or not that improved the situation, I can't say with any certainty, but it will create more subs. The hope would be that it would make us as competitive as we can be. How much crossover of subs there are between these communities? A lot of people tend to sub at one or two school districts. But I I think the desire here from the administrative team was that something we can do. Our teachers are pretty worn out right now, particularly those giving up their daily prep periods. And frankly, when we have a lack of sub and I, I think we should give the board update, you know, this happens pretty regular basis, particularly in middle school, we have seven periods being covered by prep areas for maybe hundreds of dollars a day, so. I think our administrative team felt that this is something that we can do to hope to rectify it and at the very least, yeah, it shows our folks that we're, we're trying.
Seems like, wasn't it just a year or two ago that we bumped it up to 120?
It was a couple of years ago, I want to say eighteen, 2018, nineteen. We went to 120, so 105.
Any evidence that that helped at that time?
I, I can't say that that Thursday thing which lead us to believe that it was directly correlated to that.
So when moving to 240, is that not out of $25? $75 per month, so, time, second one?
Well, if the sub pool increases.
Sub pool doesn't increase, it's still be like, we have to kind of pay our teachers that didn't show up $140, you're still paying $120. Yeah, all right, so you have a new show, I'll let you maybe get any more out of this.
So I did, I think this needs to be what I do, right at the top. Because, yeah, you go pull the smaller people. Those, you will pull people in. That is something that they're.
Living comments will be your stuff now, love, every day.
No, although Rita did have one inquiry from someone about her sub pay. This was someone in the area, region, you know, and then when she told them, they said, they mentioned names.
Did we not, early on in your tenure, Joel had asked for something. A, a, something that was on his phone as far as filling subs, a program, you remember that?
Yeah, we do have that, okay, we've had that for some time, so when the jobs are, the opening, they're posted, so anybody who substitutes, they, that's where they sign up for the job. They they would go in and they would see the districts and they would see, you know, what's open for a particular day and that's how they fill them.
Okay.
You also have that, like, when we fill out to be gone, when we say we need a sub, it pops up that you can recommend or ask for a particular person that's been removed in the past.
Is this just a debate only thing or is this going to other districts like that?
Yeah, it's on an app. So you could pull that up as a sub and say, okay, I've got these jobs and names, I've got this in the day, I've got these in the bathroom today. Which one do I want?
Are those our long-term sub pay compared to other districts?
Yeah, so our long-term sub pay is $175 a day. That kicks in after five consecutive days in, in a particular position. And the spreadsheet that I pulled the comparative data, not everyone listed their long-term sub pay, but ours was competitive, most were 175 that were on there, there just weren't a lot of them listed.
Do we have anybody on, on term sub right now?
Um, most common long-term subs are for comparative reason. Pretty rare that we don't have somebody that don't have one coming to mind, yeah. We have long-term subs, particularly at Central.
Probably longevity increase, the period that you're opposing, do we, do we have a story about other districts having something like that?
Cole and Misco is the only one that I know, and so I just learned that, um, for Rita, and it seemed like a pretty good idea. It would be an incentive to want to make sure that you, if you are going to be a new sub to the beta, that would be an incentive to stick with us.
Are school districts able to, do you want me back up, do you still have to do a training course to become a substitute teacher if you don't have a teacher's license?
Yes, but they have made the sub authorization, so there's the sub certificate and certification and then there's a sub authorization, which is a little easier to get. The sub authorization, however, you cannot sub, I want to say more than five executive days in a single position. So I don't, under the sub authorization, you wouldn't be able to be a long-term sub per se.
Do they still have to go through the training program or it was like 15 hours?
I, I, I believe the sub authorization, I, there's something, but they made it easier.
What I was getting at with the questions is, I'm just wondering if the school district, the school districts in general often post that training to build your own substitute pool.
Yeah, I think it's on the way. Not a hundred percent sure. I'll put that in the board update, I can find that.
Any further questions?
Any other ideas been kicked around as to, you know, other than raising the sub pay? Anything that would maybe set us apart, that could offer us, set us apart a little bit, anything?
I'm all ears. I don't want to get into bidding war with ourselves, so.
Well, I don't either, but.
I think we go to the top of the eight, 140 is the way it looks like to me, so. It really, to come upon the other districts that will choose to master some of these, so.
Well, that matches.
Well, it always happens, we, you.
Have you looked at the list now?
Well, you've been on the time, this is your second goal, that is a sub pay.
Well, that's why I'm asking if there's, you know, anything else that you can do. You know, maybe this is a silly question, but, um, substitutes pay for their own lunch? Do our teachers pay for their own lunch?
Yes.
My teachers pay for their own lunch.
So substitutes do as well?
As far as I know, I, I guess I've never thought about that, you know?
I, I believe everybody would pay for lunch, but.
They only used to use the kid's lunch bar, so I don't think.
Okay. There's no such things as free lunch, just.
Well, I sort of give a big trouble that much.
There is a free lunch, we go. I don't know, it's three bucks, but. You want a free breakfast and a free lunch?
Let's give them some easy parking, that's cheap.
See, I mean, little things like that.
Subs.
No, but I don't, I also don't want to.
Administration, I don't want to chop them like the, like the seniors do.
That would be part of it, so. Little weird stuff like that just might be enough to entice someone just once.
Well, I'm always happy to get a close by.
What I want to make sure I don't, we don't do is, is start treating our subs better than our, our full-time teachers.
Yeah, somebody will bring that up in a minute. All right. I think we probably got to that point, why don't we just vote on it? Okay, so we had the opportunity to raise our sub pay from 120 to 140 and increase our longevity incentives, the $50 a day after 30 days. And we got a long-term sub pay, you get 75 every five consecutive days, that's what you're voting on. Looking for a motion in a second? Motion in a second to approve our, our substitute teacher compensation package, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Consent agenda.
Sorry, not that it's.
I was surprised on the retirements myself. Yeah, it's been a while. So did I hear right to that with the rest of, I went back in this week?
It sounds like they'll be out of it. Maybe next week, then we can start moving in with the pass and stuff.
We'll have some work to do in there, so I'm guessing. Hopefully it'll be in before break, but. It might, yeah.
Did, did we get a TV screen in there like we talked about?
Yeah, last time I was there, I didn't see one, but it was also pretty full room. That's something, that's an easy revisit, I mean, you know, as far as sound is concerned, as far as visual is concerned, you know?
I remember, I think it was you that brought that up about, you know, while we're in there doing this, to, to get it wired and set up.
Well, my travels do not take me into any of the more cutting edge wrestling rooms, so you got one 10 miles from here, you got one 175 miles from there, what do they got? Or some of your better high school programs, I guess, you know? Always found success and shamelessly adopting what other schools are doing well. Anybody see anything in the bills? Minutes, any?
The ones that are labeled official, is that?
Those are the payments for the officials for the athletic events. Those are the payments for the officials for the athletic events. You got wrestling uniform? Well, I don't think that'd be enough to equip the whole team. No, I suspect not, but somebody had wrestling.
I hadn't noticed that before. Is that the reason they?
Joe, I believe that was something that was very personal. Anybody else? I just wanted basketball. Played basketball for two years. I think it's just future, but. We have a motion in a second approved. The consent agenda with the additions is listed tonight. It's in our table, six two, six three. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Remember comments?
Saying every sport season, I'm thankful for the live streams, not only here, but for places that are gracious enough to host this. Also for poor people in our gym.
Vision's good. I will see some things start to come down the CC. So, Macey, you were there. As your person, what did you think?
It was simply a surprise of how good it was. We had some other good speakers and some of the small sessions. They had some some conversations, whatever that was, that was a little controversial, but good. Trying to identify. Some of the ideas I heard, that just our district is already influencing them, so it's just like to hear that we're doing a lot of that.
Would tell you the lunch speaker, to make mention of it, a gentleman was from the East Coast, Chinese national, that said something profoundly, I'm still bouncing around like that, that he said, don't worry about the test scores. It's okay if, you know, this nation, this nation, this nation beats us up on it. Because the thing is, when you flip the the equation over to quality of life, they will tell you just because you're good at math doesn't mean you're having a successful and prosperous life. That in the United States, that's not necessarily the case. And I thought, boy, you're saying that current bunch of people responsible for education. Young is in the young's house. I think so. Yeah, I've heard it before and I've also read a couple of his books. Pretty fascinating. Yeah, you just don't see that one coming. Yeah, he really got to it where the only word, oh, yes, this is where you you stack rank to the world, but that doesn't mean that you're not a success as a culture and a country. And I guess that he's looked at it much harder than I ever will, so I'm gonna take some of the words. All right, calendar. We're gonna be in here in a couple weeks. Everybody check standard, come back here. Before Christmas, knock it out, park.
We have a retreat coming up next month?
Um, I have a doodle prepared, but you'll get this week with some things on it. Anything else for the good of the order? Nothing. I'm taking Washington to. Second, all in favor? All right, wait. Thank you.